Go on the road, call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Alicia will not be with us tonight. Just the four of us plus our supporting cast. I report, we had a public safety meeting, nothing overly exciting coming out of that. I did meet in with regard to our irrigation management plan, and that was in reference to our post-session later on tonight. We will be recessing at 6:30 for a public hearin', hearin', yeah, hearin', hearing in regards to various requests from Shane Schmidt. And then we'll be going into closed session towards the end of the meeting to discuss an offer on real property, and that description is listed there at the bottom of our agenda. And that is it for my report. Councilmember Hertzberg?
I had administrative fine hearing board, and we just had public works. Then last week, we did some property negotiating sessions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rinkie?
I've had a very quiet two weeks.
Good for you. Councilmember Gilmore?
Administrative fine hearing and parking tree.
Parking tree. All right. Thank you very much. We have no department. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda with note that item F on our whole business has been pulled from the agenda as per our update there.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second, motion by Rinkie to approve the consent agenda. Second by Hertzberg. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. All right. First item up, first three actually, deal with the liquor store. First one is the purchase of a humidor, and Bill will let us know all about that.
Yes, Your Honor. So recently, cigar sales have been increasing, and I've had quite a following and requests for getting into more fine cigars other than just the 399 Swisher Sweets. So we've been doing some research, actually about the last six months, I've been researching at other liquor stores, talking to them. A lot of them have the stand-up ones, a lot of them have rooms. I'm looking for just a countertop one to start small. It would hold 16 cigars and through the humidor store for 672. Now, I know we have a motion that passed through our liquor board up to $750 for one that was already stocked. But after doing a lot, some more research and talking to the company that sold it for the seven, around 750, you would have to buy cigars through them, and you're not talking 10 at a time, you're talking 30 to 50 at a time. And some of them are low-end cigars. So I can go through my regular cigar guy and get 10 to a box, and if they don't move, they're faster to get out of the way than buying 30 of them. So that's what we're looking to do to start small and see where it takes us, so.
And then the 10 at a time, that's various?
Different kinds, up to 16 different kinds.
Okay.
And tobacco was, last year was amazing. So it's, even with all the new laws, it's still booming, so.
I'll move to approve the purchase of a humidor in the amount of $672 plus tax from the humidor store. I'll second that.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve the purchase of a humidor in the amount of $672 plus tax from the humidor store. Discussion?
Where does the funding come from?
It would come from CAP, from CIP. We have it in savings.
Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the next item is an annual renewal of our license with the lottery. And for motion to approve the contract between the city and Minnesota State Lottery. And authorize Ron Mergen?
All motion to approve the Minnesota State Lottery retailer contract between the city of Pansville and Minnesota State Lottery. And authorize Ron Mergen acting as the administrator to sign the documents. Second?
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve that contract between the state lottery and the city. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And next item is the wine club event. We'll let Bill give a verbal report here. We also have a member of the committee here.
Yes, Your Honor. Our last liquor board meeting, we discussed reaching out for bids to host our wine clubs. Sent out three bids, two were returned. One, the American Legion, the other, roadside tavern. I'm concerned about $200 a month for cost. It would put us in the red to have a wine club. We tried not doing wine club for a while last year, and it ended up costing us in the end. It's 10 years in, we're still packing 50 to 60 people, and it's, you know, 605 cases or 606 cases we have sold through wine clubs. So it's a very important part of our business. So we'd like to continue that.
I'd like to make a note to that Bill and his group do everything. The only thing I think they're great is water.
Water, and ice as well.
Yeah, water, ice.
Water, ice.
And that's it. Yeah, electric.
Opposed event? Yep, parking, restrooms.
I was really kind of concerned on how the prices came through. I don't really understand that. We did it at Ron and Judy's for a long time, and then Queen Bee's and American Legion last year were how much?
$100.
$100.
Ron and Judy's was free.
Would you still have special events at other venues?
We would discuss it. I think we'd be open for discussion. I don't think anything's ever finalized, so.
Did you do have, had like your bourbon nights and?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We've got requests for all kinds of nights. It's signing the night.
I'll make a motion.
Neil's got it.
Yes, Neil.
Bill, is this something that, I know it's usually Thursday nights, right?
Yes.
Because Thursday night is the music at the park. But other than that, could it be at the Veterans Park?
No.
No?
We would have to, you would have to pair with a nonprofit, and the city could deem a liquor license, but we'd have to find a nonprofit to sponsor us is the only way you can do that. And then we would, we could pull our own drab shop insurance. You'd have to have for that as well. And I'm unaware of those costs. But I reached out, because our liquor board, we've discussed this, of doing it at Veterans Park and at the parks, several of them. But you can't just go out there and drink without the proper insurance. And to do it legally by state statute, you have to have a nonprofit sponsor it. I reached out to the city of Lakeville. Lakeville does it with their Rotary Club, is how it's done.
We do have Alliance Club that might be interested.
Yeah. Then we could do it, you could do it here. You could do it anywhere with, but you'd still have to come to the council for their approval, and you're allowed to do it up to 12 times a year. That would be pushing it 12 times a year for a one-time license, a temporary license.
We should mention, we have another member of the committee here too, Jennifer.
If I could lend one more thing that we asked. The reason we have to go off-premises for drab shop insurance, like the bar has insurance that helps cover as well, just so that is noted, you know.
I'll make a motion to host the event, the wine club events at roadside tavern. I'll second that.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to hold wine club at roadside tavern. And I have a question from a member of the liquor committee?
I just was gonna explain a little bit.
Oh.
Can I just sit here and talk?
No.
Until lately, we haven't had to go for Ron and Judy's and then the Legion. And between B, they were, used to be both $100. And that's kind of our breaking point. If we could make a dive or go in red or black. So then because of the Ron and Judy closing and the information that we found that roadside is a chamber member, a Pansville chamber member, so being that, that makes him a member of, a business member of Pansville. So we decided to open him up to ask him, we had our Christmas there, and it worked out very well. And then because of that, and price is not going where we kind of need them to go, we decided to put bids out. And that's where we finally, to be the most fair to everybody around, to give everybody an opportunity, the three places in town that are chamber members, to give them an opportunity to do that. So, and that's where we ended up with this. So it, in my eyes, it kind of shows who really wants us and who doesn't want us. Thank you.
Thank you, and let's see. The goal is not to make money necessarily, but it's not to lose money.
You can't lose money.
It was basically to be a great event over the course of time.
It's to get people to try different products at a reasonable price. And, you know, and we're getting less back from our vendors. In fact, we talked about raising our prices for the first time in almost eight years just to cover our costs, make sure we're covering that cost of the wine. As our tastes have increased, the values of the wine have increased as well, so. So, yeah, that's to cover our costs just to host it. Doesn't cover what we're selling, just what we're hosting.
And the committee has gone up before for quotes?
Yes, yes, several times, several times.
So this is not the first time?
No, absolutely not, no.
Yes, Neil.
There is an issue, and I haven't seen it on paper, but I believe, I was on Lake and Pansville, and Robbs School had a ad that they're gonna start Thursday night bingo.
Right. And they do that, they have two sides. And they have a smaller side and a larger side, so he can divide the, kind of like what we did at the Legion, they had bingo in another area, the other area would be open, from my understanding.
We also have a class reunion out there too, which we couldn't have it here because Eden Bailey was at the Legion for a class reunion, so. Anything else? Proceed to vote. All in favor? The motion is to hold wine club at roadside tavern. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. All right. Thank you. Then the next item is pay equity here, and Melinda will give us an update as to where we're at on that.
Well, I don't really have anything to say other than we did tax, we're in compliance. The mayor was able to sign that in time that we put it in by the January 31st deadline, which was one of the criteria to be in pay equity, compliance. So we're done, as far as I know, and I believe we do this every three, three years, I believe.
So I need to start now?
Yeah, exactly.
Took a while to get through the process.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Pansville pay equity compliance and implementation reports.
Second? Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve the city of Pansville pay equity compliance and implementation reports. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. All right. Then the next item is to deals with our library that needs some repairs. Mr. Mergen?
Great, thank you. First of all, we had the lighting upgrade, Excel Energy. You know, we did have a rep go through there, did the analysis for switching everything out to LEDs. The total amount comes to 45, 4231. Budget and finance committee had recommended that we do not do that at this time and wait and see what happens with the library, can always come back to it. The other item is we do have some water damage in the back coming down the rear door. We did get two prices on that, the low being from Jason Vanderpool Construction in the amount of $10,938. They will take some, strip the back portion and put steel on the back and do all the trimming that we need to there to prevent any further water damage, so. And in order to fund this, we would need to transfer $11,000 from the reserves over to the municipal building CIP. Any other questions on that?
I'll make a motion to transfer $11,000 from Fund 100 General Fund Reserves to Fund 121 General Fund Capital Improvement, Municipal Building Department, to cover the cost of the library repairs. Second?
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to transfer $11,000 from Fund 100 General Fund Reserves to Fund 121 General Fund Capital Improvement, Municipal Building Department, to cover the cost of the library repairs. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried.
I'll move to approve the quote from Jaser Vanderpool Construction in the amount of $10,938.07 for library building repairs.
Second? Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the quote from Jason Vanderpool Construction in the amount of $10,938.07 for library building repairs. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. Next item is coming through the fire department and hiring process. Recommendation to hire Jessica Stransky as the next Pansville volunteer firefighter upon the completion of her physical and a one-year probation. And just note that Chief Andy, Andy, he could not be here tonight. They, we have training tonight too, and we do have one member in the fire department here for something else.
I'll make a motion to hire Jessica Stransky as a Pansville volunteer firefighter upon the completion of her physical and the one-year probation.
Second? Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Hertzberg, thirded by Rinkie to hire Jessica Stransky as a Pansville volunteer firefighter upon the completion of her physical and one-year probation. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried.
I had just, I didn't get, are we still short a couple or?
Right now, we have 24 firefighters on staff. We do have two that are gonna potentially be retiring within the next six months. I don't know if we keep the hiring process open year-round or if it's just on a certain time.
As needed.
Okay. But I'm sure within the next six months, we're gonna be looking again.
Kind of ongoing.
It's tougher and tougher to get people to apply too, which is unfortunate.
We're not alone, and we are in better shape than other smaller departments.
Yeah, we like to be in that range of 24 to 26.
Okay, you know, going into a couple of policy and procedural things have been coming through there. First one is the elimination when the state administrator's not in the office policy, and some changes on there. They're recommending to approve this and then eliminate it when the new policy manual is worked on, completed.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the, of when the city administrator is not in the office policy.
Second?
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Gilmore to eliminate the of when the city administrator's not in the office policy. Discussion?
Just want to clarify that with all of these, when they're done, that new policy manual will be complete, and anything that we might approve tonight, if it's not in that policy, will be effectively eliminated. Is that my understanding, Melinda, Jennifer?
So all of these will be cut and basted into that new policy?
Okay, that's the intention then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the next one is the out-of-state travel policy for elected and appointed officials. And that, again, is being worked on, and if approved, will be inserted into the manual if the motion passes.
I'll make the motion to approve the out-of-state travel policy for elected and appointed officials and for it to be included in the personnel policy.
Second? Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve the out-of-state travel policy for elected and appointed officials and for it to be included in the personnel policy. And we just note that that has not been used for, since we were working on the Highway 23 bypass thing, probably 10 years ago now. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the next one is the cellular or telephone policy.
I'll move to approve the cellular telephone policy and for it to be included in the personnel policy.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve the cellular telephone policy and for it to be included in the personnel policy. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And our update here, with just one change on the inclement weather policy. And that change was that vacation been changed to ETO has been printed.
Can I make a motion to approve the inclement weather policy and for it to be included in the personnel policy?
Second? Motion by Gilmore, seconded by everybody else. I'll give it to Hertzberg there. To approve the cellular telephone policy and for it to be included in the personnel policy. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. The next one is the employee reimbursement policy. The only thing on the update there was that there was a difference between the numbers, and it should be $35 for the dinner instead of 30, as it was printed in one place.
I will move to approve the employee reimbursement policy to be included in the personnel policy. Man. Second?
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve the cellular telephone policy and for it to be included in the personnel policy. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the next one is the respectful workplace policy, which includes sexual harassment prevention. And this was to be recommended to be approved. And again, we're working through all that, but we're looking for, to approve this and then be included in the personnel policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the respectful workplace policy, include sexual harassment prevention, and to be included in the personnel policy.
Second? Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve the respectful workplace policy, which includes sexual harassment prevention, to be included in the personnel policy. Discussion. My understanding, this is basically the legal Minnesota city's model, so be fine. Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And then we have some ordinances that have been reworked through and have been posted, so looking for final approval on that. The first one is ordinance number 7, third series, dealing with the trail. And some of the changes there had to do with the width of allowed things on there, especially dealing with the tandem bikes, which probably not an issue. And then also some other changes in some language there, dealing with alcoholic beverages, pets, and private garages.
I move to approve ordinance number 7, third series. Second?
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve ordinance number 7, third series. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the next one is ordinance number 9, third series, dealing with deferments of special assessments for senior citizens. Again, this is another one that had been reviewed and changed and posted and looking for final approval.
Motion to approve ordinance number 9, third series. Second?
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve ordinance number 9, third series. And that basically brings the ordinance into line with what we've been doing with practice for that. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the last one here is ordinance number 8, third series, deletion of cable board. That's no longer needed. Again, have gone through the process here.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 8, third series.
Second?
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve ordinance number 8, third series. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. And the AMPI expansion project, and Mr. DeWolff supposedly will give a verbal report and looking for payment estimate to approve to.
Yeah, just a quick update on the project. The contractor continues to move forward with construction. They have finished the casing and everything below the tracks and restart the intersection in the downtown area. They continue to work on some of the tracks. They do have that casing in as well. They're working on getting the pipe inserted into that one, so. That hopefully will wrap up in the next week or so up there. They'll still be working on the lift station site, but they'll continue to get everything backfilled and restart as they move forward. Then they continue to also work out at the wastewater plant on the pre-treatment facility. They continue to work out there as well, so. And your package is a copy of a request number 7 in the amount of $230,373.15 for work that the contractor completed during January.
I'll make a motion to approve payment estimate number 7 in the amount of $230,373.15 payable to Eagle Construction Company Incorporated.
Second?
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve payment estimate number 7 in the amount of $230,373.15 payable to Eagle Construction Company, Inc. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carried. The next item is in regards to the senior living facility going up at Opats. This is in regards to the tax income financing agreement and loan, and it's basically for information at this time and for the public to be, have a look at it also. Anybody have any questions on it at this point in time?
Chef?
Yep.
I was in today, and he has reviewed it. And on the very first page, it says, develop a three-story assisted living facility. He has had conversations with the city regarding a four-story, so I think we're gonna change the language to say up to four stories. Then he can do one, two, or three. The number of rental units will not change.
Can we do four-story? I thought fire was three was the max.
Well, I am not a firefighter. I know that you have to get through this. I know FAA has to approve the height, and the elevations that they gave us, FAA has approved that. And I know that there is a pressure, water pressure question. I don't know about fighting fires at four levels.
I know one time was, I think that came up with the, the new apartments. And if it went over three, I think you have to get a ladder truck.
No.
It's a certain amount, isn't it? There are certain stolen buildings in the city that go over.
Something to do with the ISOM ratings.
Because there was some reason why that only went three. There was some reason why that only went three, which will be new apartments.
What's on 55 out there? I don't think, I don't recall that being fire-related, and my recollection, and we'll double check, but I think once you reach a certain number or square footage of buildings or something, that.
I thought we asked Brad at one time, and we were looking on ordinance, but I can't remember what he said, but I would have to defer that to the chief of fire.
Okay, make a note, we'll get that checked. Okay, and then it is 29 and 55 seconds, so we will recess the council meeting. All to order. seconds. So we will recess the council meeting, call to order a public hearing. And the public hearing has been called to address variance request from Shane Schmidt. And Mr. Schmidt is here to answer any questions. The planning commission has, I believe, taken a look at this, and they recommend approval. All the information is listed, listed there, including pictures to show that others have gone closer to the right of way. He wishes to put a porch on the front of his building, which is on
The other west side.
Here, yeah, here, yeah.
On the east side.
Yeah, east side of
Or Lake Ronus.
Ronus.
Ronus Haven, sorry.
Ronus Haven, south, yep. Anything else you want to add?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to put a, a nine-foot wide by eight-foot front porch on. I would, I'd like to put it in the front because in the back, it would obstruct where my kids are and all that stuff. Plus, I have multiple utility areas right in that area. So it makes it difficult to put it in the back location. And then it would also, if I ever were to expand in the future someday, it would create issues with that as well. So basically, I'm here to just request for the variance to be approved.
Anybody here to speak either for or against the request? Doesn't look like it. I know if Bill were here, he would make his standard comment about, you know, is, is there an undue hardship or that type of thing? And the comment that we are addressing our zoning ordinance, or plan on addressing our zoning ordinance to make that come in line with common practice as to what we've been doing with variances. Anything else you would care to add?
No, I think you pretty much summed up what exactly what Bill would have mentioned.
Is there anything else for the hearing? If not, we will close the hearing and open the regular council meeting and can deal with item H at this point in time.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance determination for Shane Schmidt.
Sorry.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve the variance determination for Shane Schmidt. And I see staff had read the council's mind because they did fill in the approved rather than leave the blank for deny. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I oppose. None.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we can, nothing else back on item E, your negotiation management plan. We will discuss that and potentially act on that after the full session. Then the next item is the ad hoc library development committee, right, not board. I think we went to pretty much all committees, didn't we?
All boards.
All boards, okay. All right. I stand corrected. Then one note on there. I have been in contact again with Jennifer Anfson, and she wants to, or will be getting off the Friends of the Library Board. So similar to the, working with the Great River, I would leave that open to a representative of the Great River Regional Library System rather than tying it to one name, if that would be okay with the, with the board. And just to note on there that of those that are, I'm asking for approval, Megan Brick, Kayla Lesh, Anne Fredericks, and Beth Voss, were all part of the Blandon Community Development cohort, so are familiar with issues like this. Joanne Nevitt, thanks to Sean for tipping her off to me. And those are the five that are requesting to be appointed. And then Becky Bertram, who was Becky Peak at one point in time as an alternate, so we could get broad, be sure that we have adequate people on the board.
So the Friends of the Library doesn't have a representative?
They'll have an open, like Great River Regional Library, like is representative, Nilla Page, a representative from the Great River Regional Library, will serve as an advisory member on the board. So would someone, someone from the Friends of the Library, someone that is available.
Not Jennifer, but someone?
Yeah, not Jennifer, but
So in essence, it could end up with nine.
Yeah, but there's only seven voting members to advisory.
I'll move to approve the list of individuals as presented on page one hundred and thirty-seven of the packet to the ad hoc library board, with the exception of Jennifer Anfson, who should instead just be indicated as a Friends of the Library representative. Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve the name, list of appointees to the library development board with the understanding that the Friends of the Library will have an advisory place in addition to the, at the Great River Regional Library system does. Be clear on that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, aye.
I oppose. None.
And that is it. So then informational, we just have the 2020 Legislative Conference coming up March 18th and 19th. And I am interested in going to that. If anybody else, check your calendars, and please let Belinda know if you have not done that already. Then we will be going into closed session to discuss an offer on real property. The description is listed on the bottom of the first page and continued on the second page of the agenda. And for that, we should have our attorneys stick around. We should have our city engineers stick around. And the, both of the interadministrators, whatever their titles are. Bill, you can.
Thank you.
And we will